I have a motion to reconvene into open session. Motion Dr. Siddiqui, seconded by Ms. Scorola, all in favor, four zero. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Flag is in the back.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a motion to approve the regular business meeting minutes from April 11th, 2024. Motion Dr. Siddiqui, seconded by Ms. Scorola, all in favor, four zero. That brings us up to our student liaison report this evening. We're fast tonight, Anthony. We're not messing around.
My call. Okay. Good evening, Board, Administration, community members. My report is also somewhat brief tonight due to a lot of reports in my last update. So, starting with Harley, this month, Dr. Toscano has enjoyed being a secret reader for several classes of the April nights of the month's celebration, which will also take place on the 30th. Ms. LaBarbera's class will be visiting their buddy class at the high school next week on the 16th, which should be a lot of fun for everyone. First graders will be going on a field trip to Sweet Briar Nature Center on April 29th and May 1st. School and EBC clubs continue while the Harley PTA plans for the end of the year celebrations as well as their annual fundraiser Parents Night Out on May 17th. Students at Boyd continue to have their after-school clubs and wish, and I wish them good luck on their New York State ELA exams, which will be on April 11th and April 12th. With Boyd's first play Aristocats on the works for May, they have been working on a grade transitioning act, they've been working on grade transitioning activities for second to third grade and for fifth to sixth grade. Boyd and EMS students are busy with studies while staff and volunteers prepare for their end-of-the-year events and celebrations with more to come next month. As the middle school's third quarter comes to an end, spring sports have started and we are excited that the middle school will be having their ERA breakfast this month, where students will be honored not only for, necessarily for high achievement, but for hard work, a positive attitude, improvement, cooperation, enthusiasm, and overall character. At the high school, we have had many wonderful events. Firstly, I would like to thank the JGHS and Central Office staff for the amazing career day we had. My peers and I learned so much from this experience and benefited from that day. We appreciate everyone who made this, this day happen. Congratulations to our newly inducted National Honor Society members and to those who will be inducted next week to the Language and Art Honor Societies. With the high school's third term concluding, we have had our, we are, we are having our annual Festival of the Arts next week on the 16th and report cards being posted by the 30th. Congratulations and good luck to my peers, who today and throughout this week and next week will perform their Seal of Bilingualities presentations. The junior class banquet will be held this Saturday at the cafeteria, and as we saw at the snowball, the renovated cafeteria and its lights, lights and acoustics make for a great dance venue. The courtyard was recently cleaned and new lights were installed courtesy of our building and grounds crew. Student council will be fundraising to display American flags on campus for Memorial Day. And excitedly, seniors have voted on their suggested graduating speaker to be reviewed by our summa cum laude's for a final decision. With that, thank you for your time and have a good evening. Thank you.
As always, Anthony, thank you for your robust update, and it looks like the future of tennis might not be windy and too rainy going forward, so I hope you get to enjoy the rest of your senior year playing in the right conditions in tennis. So, you're welcome. Appreciate it. Good night. All right. Ms. Fallon, that brings us up to our superintendent's report this evening.
Thank you so much, Mr. Tomio, and I too would like to inform the community that on Tuesday, March 26th, 68 John Glenn students were inducted into the National Honor Society. The, but the event was wonderful. It was filled with acknowledgement of scholarly achievement, service, and the efforts of all of our students. So, congratulations to those 68 individuals. The Career Fair held at John Glenn on March 27th was a huge success. Students were exposed to a diverse range of career options, and we had over 50 presenters and really a number of hands-on presentations that also took place. Parent orientation at Elwood Middle School took place for our parents of fifth-grade students who will be transitioning to the middle school next year. That was held last week. Yesterday, we had superintendent's conference day. Professional development focusing on the differentiation of instruction, science of reading, equitable grading practices took place all throughout the district. Additionally, all staff was trained on workplace violence prevention. It was a great day. The feedback has been extremely positive from the teachers. Our administrators did an outstanding job. Beginning today, the New York State ELA assessment was administered to students in grades three through eight. We're looking forward to our parent university that will take place next week. The elementary university for parents will be April 15th from 6:00 to 7:45. The secondary university will be on the 16th from 6:00 to 7:45 also. Both of the parent universities will be held at EMS. Third quarter marking period ends on April 12th for John Glenn High School and EMS. Our unified basketball season will open at John Glenn on Wednesday, April 17th at 5:00 PM. And on Thursday, May 23rd, we're very happy to let the community know that a Memorial Day celebration will be held in collaboration with the U.S. Marine Corps on the John Glenn football field beginning at 9:00. And there will be more information forthcoming. And I would just like to take a moment to thank the Elwood Booster Club and our earth science teacher, John Mead, at the middle school for their generous donation of the solar eclipse glasses for all of our students. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Ms. Fallon. That brings us up to our first residence remarks. Going to move on, there'll be a second residence remarks later on this evening. That now brings us up to our presentation. We have a few presentations this evening. Our first one is on the Science of Reading by Dr. Toscano, our principal at Harley Avenue, our principal, Ms. Milan, over at James H. Boyd, and Ms. Fine is joining in on that as well, I believe, right? Perfect. Alrighty. The floor is yours. Thank you. And to open up is our Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction, Dr. Hood.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education, Interim Superintendent Ms. Kelly Fallon and District Administrators. On behalf of Dr. Toscano, Principal of Harley Elementary School, Ms. Alyssa Milan, Principal of Boyd Intermediate School, and Ms. Pam Fine, our Director of Humanities, I would like to express our appreciation and thanks for the opportunity to present to you an overview of the Science of Reading. The Science of Reading represents the extensive body of research on literacy instruction. It is not a curriculum, a framework, or a program. It is not even a new concept, but it has reemerged on the heels of the reading wars debate on the best way to teach children how to read. The two opposing perspectives reflect explicit phonics instruction via versus whole language approach to literacy instruction. And I just want to give a little historical context. I think it's always important to give the why behind our actions. So, in 1998, Congress commissioned a national reading panel of experts in the field to conduct research that focused on grades K to 12 literacy instruction. And they were additionally given one year to do the research, and they became so immersed in it, they asked for an additional year. So, two years later, in 2000, the panel issued a report based upon their research and findings that highlighted several pillars that were essential to develop proficient readers. And they are identified as, let's see, I guess I can go to the next screen here. Okay. So, they're identified on the screen as well. So, those several pillars that were identified were phonics and phonological awareness, oral language, fluency, vocabulary, and reading comprehension. And that will be explained a little bit further in the presentation. So, over the course of the 23-24 current school year, we have worked collaboratively to embed practices and methodologies that reflect the research on best practices of literacy. Ms. Pamela Fine, our Director of Humanities, will provide additional information on the simple view of reading and how it relates to literacy instruction here at, in Elwood.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Welcome. See if I can get the next slide. Okay, so this image here shows what is defined, how reading is defined, and it is reading equals decoding and language comprehension. So, this has been always a well-known factor, and we are going to dig a little bit deeper. It's interesting that, that previous slide is called the simple view of reading because the reading process is anything but simple. It's actually quite complex. This image comes out of the Science of Reading, and it's known as the Skarsby reading rope. So, in essence, if you look at this image, the bottom portion, the, in green, talks about the decoding elements. And that is made up of phonological awareness, or the way we hear sounds in our language, and sight recognition, representing how sounds match letters. That's phonics. Okay? And the top portion talks about language comprehension. So, you'll see in this, in this slide, language comprehension involves the ability to know vocabulary, its background knowledge, its language structures, the structures of the English language, its literary knowledge, and its verbal reasoning. All of these components have to come in play and to become a proficient reader. I really like this image because it, the strands alone represent our early readers, and to become an early reader, your, things are kind of separate. You're learning things in isolation, you're trying to make sense of them. But as our students move through instruction, they begin to weave together, and you, you begin to do things, these processes simultaneously and with more accuracy and speed. And as you move along the rope, you'll see a big divide between decoding and language acquisition. And what the Science of Reading really points out is that language development, oral language, our, our brains are pre-wired for that before we are born. So, when you learn, a child learns naturally to speak. However, what's, what's the Science of Reading has proven is that the other part, the decoding, the reading and writing, our bodies, our brains are not hardwired for that. That was man-created. So, in essence, our brain is, our brains are rewiring themselves through systematic instruction to learn the process of reading. So, as you move through the grades, where you see the, the round, the wider round integrated, that's around third grade. And as you move through the continuum, the box over the end is where a proficient reader is. They can see, they can read quickly, allowing more brain space to be used for comprehension, problem-solving, more higher-order thinking skills. So, this is the essence of what this image is for. And this is an image showing the brain research. As you can see, there are actually different areas in your brain that do different jobs. And the area, these pathways have to be created from repetition, from explicit instruction, from structured, structured literacy instruction. And as you build memory and as you build stronger pathways, they begin to light up in, in patterns, and they begin to light up more frequently and fast. So, when a child is first learning to read, they are very slow, and they take a lot of brain capacity to just say sounds and words. But as you become a fluent reader, your brain remembers and stores that information, allowing more time to be spent on comprehension. So, I'm going to pass it on to Dr. Toscano, and she's going to delve a little bit deeper into those components.
Good evening. So, Pam shared a lot of research with you, and she explained a lot of theories. And back when the National Reading Panel put all their research together, also called the Science of Reading, right, it's just research, they came up with five pillars. So, a way for you to walk away from tonight's board meeting, understanding a little bit more about the Science of Reading, is understanding the five pillars. Sorry. I don't have my glasses, so we're going to, I'm just going to talk off the cuff. No, I got it. I got it. So, phonological awareness, when you see phonological awareness, I want you to think it's an umbrella. Okay, so it's just, that's the overview of two different topics. So, phonological awareness is part phonemic awareness. Phonemic awareness is language. It's the immersion of language. It's learning the specific, smallest sounds in our language. We do that through conversation, we do that through song, we do that through questioning, we do that through rhyme and reasoning and all of that. When we get to phonics, that's the part of the umbrella where we attach the sound to the letter, and then the multiple letters to the blend. So, both are needed in order for our students to be proficient readers. The third pillar is fluency. Fluency is really important. The rate of fluency, the accuracy of fluency, the protacy of literacy, because if we are able to read at a quick rate with intonation and understanding what we're reading, our brain is using less space for the decoding, and we're actually allowed to allow the language to come in so that we can process it. So, that's why fluency is so important. Next is vocabulary, which begins right from the very beginning. We are language people. Language comes naturally to us. But in order for students to really learn, we have to build upon their vocabulary so it becomes more complex, so that they can be learning more topics. And last but not least is the comprehension piece. That is the goal of everything. In the beginning, when a child cannot read on their own, we're doing the comprehension for them. We're reading aloud, we're asking them questions, we're having them work with the text. As they grow in reading, then they're able to decode, and they can also comprehend and learn while they're reading to comprehend the text. So, you have just learned very quickly. And now, for Mrs. Milan.
Hi, good evening. So, our professional development this year has been pretty focused. We have, in grades three to eight, we're using advancing literacy through Teachers College, and our, our professional development has been focused mostly on vocabulary and comprehension. We also have had training through the Reading League. Our administrators, as well as all teachers K to five, have received overview training through the Reading League. We have a cross-section of staff that has, across the district, I should say, that has signed up for micro-credentials through SUNY New Paltz. And we also are receiving turnkey training on the literacy briefs. One other thing, as administrators, we are participating in book clubs on, the book is called Shifting the Balance, which is six ways to bring the Science of Reading into a balanced literacy classroom. So, the administrators are participating in this, and we also have purchased other copies of the book so that we can get other staff involved as well. So, now, I don't want us to lose sight of the past achievements of our staff and students in Elwood. So, this is to enhance the work that we've already been doing, and so, so UFLI is a new program this year in K to two, and we are expanding to grade three for next year. This year, in grades three, four, and five, we are using the program called Spelography, and both UFLI and Spelography are through Louisa Moat's research. She has taken part in writing both programs. We are focusing on our read-alouds and making them more specific, and we are using Patterns of Power embedded into our lessons, which focuses on conventions and grammar, and the vocabulary and read-alouds that are more intentional, plus the purchasing of more decodable books and the use of more decodable books within the classrooms and intervention in the upper grades. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it. And I know that the, the new shift, obviously being a Teachers College district and the new shift of the Science of Reading and all of that, has really changed the scope of the work that we're doing, but the progress that the students are making hasn't faltered. It's always been the focus. Doesn't matter what the program is, good teaching is good teaching, and we've seen that both at Harley and Boyd, and our numbers have steadily, you know, increased. So, kudos to all the work that you guys have done with the program, without a program, with our teachers and our staff, so we appreciate that. Any questions from the Board for the panel? I'll call the panel. Dr. Siddiqui, it's a lot of you tonight.
Good evening. Thank you for that presentation. I was very absorbed into it, and this always has fascinated me. I know, just as Mr. Tomio is saying, that, you know, we've always had a very concentrated effort on our literacy programs, and I know that we've always had like such a great emphasis on it. I was wondering, because I loved this slide, the, it looks like DNA to me. If you could comment on, yeah, it, yeah, I was fascinated by this. So, if you could comment on like the neuroplasticity of the brain, because that's a big field of science that is happening, and we know that, you know, your brain really never stops learning and changing, and your pathways keep rebuilding. So, I think this is fascinating that we've kind of incorporated into the reading process. If you could explain like how we would take, if someone is having trouble with any of those issues, like how would we kind of identify and then, you know, give that student the right intervention that they need, knowing that their brain is so different.
I think Dr. Siddiqui wants to know which one of you want to be a neuroscience assist right now.
Right. This is fascinating. I loved it.
The brave one.
Thank you.
Yes. So, there's, there's a lot of ways that we are doing that, and as we learn more and more, and we crystallize the why behind things, we are able to make smarter and smarter decisions about how we proceed. So, there's a couple of formalized assessments that can look specifically at how a child is learning to decode. There's a, there's an assessment called the PAST, which looks at each of the elements in decoding and rate, and it can actually help to pinpoint whether if, whether it is a comprehension issue or specifically a phonemic awareness issue or grammar conventions or phonological issue. So, that's been really helpful. And additionally, we, we've been doing for many years here, the Orin-Gillingham program, and that assessment is called the Wade, and that's been pretty widely used in our district for intervention. And most recently, we've been trained on AmesWeb, which is another, it's, it's actually a computer program that does like one-minute assessments, and we're exploring that. We haven't made a final decision on it, but we have had some training, and we're waiting for them to come in to provide us some more, and we'll make a decision on that. And that, again, will give you direct data to move forward. Yeah.
But also, like in our intervention program, both at Harley and Boyd, our intervention teachers are trained in Wilson, and they're trained in IMSCE, which are Orin-Gillingham based programs, which do support the phonics, phonological awareness, that more so the bottom half the rope than the top.
Great. That's fabulous. Thank you so much.
Can I ask a follow-up question to that? Of the pillars, which one do you find that, do the children have the most difficulty with?
Phonics and phonetic, phonemic awareness.
Phonemic aware, and is that at the kindergarten age? Is that like right when they?
It can actually begin pre-K. So, so we'll, we noticed that the children in, in grades three, four, and five that are struggling, it may appear that they're struggling in comprehension, but really, it's because, the root of their issues is because they're not strong in phonics or phonemic awareness. And so, if we work on their phonics and phonemic awareness and build that, then they'll get better at comprehension.
Okay, yeah, because that was always the thing, like, you know, you used to like learn to read, and then you read to learn. So, that was always the, the third grade was the crossover. The second question I had, and then I'm going to go back to Tom, thank you for letting me go forward. You were talking about a book in the book club that you were reading. What is the name of that book again?
Shifting the Balance.
Shifting the Balance.
There are two of them, one that's K to two and one that's three to five.
Okay, great. Shifting the Balance. And the only other thing is we're missing.
And I'm just going to add to that. We are also, we have a secondary book club as well, and it's called Teaching Reading, and it's looking at the Science of Reading at the secondary level and, and how you can respond to students who are struggling.
Oh, that's good. Teaching Reading and Shifting the Balance. Okay. And it seems that we're missing one of the slides, which is the brain one, so.
Oh. Oh, do you know what? We switched that one out. You have a different brain. Do you have a different brain? You have a different brain.
Oh, we have a different brain, but it's not as, it's not as nice as your brain.
That's why we switched it.
I know. Can we get the nicer brain?
Yes.
Okay.
You'll have to see the wizard.
Because we don't have it in either of our things. Thank you. We're all going like crazy, like.
We felt this one was, was more clear, so we.
Yes, this one was definitely more clear, but we're older. Well, I'm older, so, yeah. You know, these young guys. Okay, thank you, Tom.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you all for being here tonight. I really appreciate it. I'm very passionate about literacy myself. I've read Shifting the Balance. I'm glad to see we're doing all these steps because unfortunately, some things came out about TC that weren't science-based, so I'm glad that we are shifting for our children. Moving forward, I think we were piloting programs, Dr. Hood. Can you talk about any of the feedback you've gotten? Is there a program you're looking for? Because I know UFLI is great, it's free. Can you speak to the Board about any updates you have with the piloting programs, please?
Well, right now, what we're doing, we have the district councils, which is a cross-section of teachers in all the buildings, and we are gathering the teachers together because we want it to be collaborative. And we are gathering the teachers together because we want it to be collaborative. We feel that the teachers are the boots on the ground, and they can provide insight and data that we may not have readily access to, because they can give real-time data. So we're getting the teachers together, and we're going to vet out some programs between now and actually June, so that in September, we'll have multiple programs being piloted, so that we can get some real data, have teachers actually go in, practice it, come back together, so it's not a one-and-done, come back, collaborate, discuss what worked, where there were strengths in the program, some gaps, deficiencies, what have you. And then we can make an informed decision after we evaluate.
So are you looking to do something coming up in the fall?
For the 24, 25 school year. This year was basically to really just get informed and understand what is the science of reading, so that we all can be on a level playing field, so that when we do make a decision, we're making it informed.
Right. And I know decodable books in the past haven't been the most exciting books for kids, but I've seen that there's been a bunch of new decodable books that have come out that actually make sense and have a story. The old decodable books were like, you read it, and it was like, what was that about? So it's good to see that they're making, companies are making better decodable books, and I do think it should be part of the learning process. So once again, thank you for everything you've done, and I feel that we're in good hands, and I'm looking forward to see what more shifts we're going to make in the fall. So thank you once again.
And the thing about it also is that the teachers are excited. The administrative team is excited. And I really just want to publicly acknowledge and give thanks to the administrative team. It wasn't always smooth sailing, but I think when you're really passionate about doing what's best for students, it may not, you know, it may not always be smooth sailing, but we were able to come together and work as a team, and we're all on board.
Yeah, no change isn't easy for anybody, especially this giant shift, but I really appreciate everybody strapping on their boots and doing the work. And I love Orin-Gillingham, and you know, that's not a program, it's more of an approach, and I like that. It's a sensory approach. So I know we're going in the right direction, and I look forward to you updating us on what we're going to be doing in the fall. So once again, thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one more question. Tom brought up, so you talked about the decoding books, right? So back when my kids were little, if they had, they had reading level books. So if you have a child, let's say, who doesn't phonics, you know, like they can't get the, what do you, what is a parent, what can a parent do to get them up to speed? Like, when my child was in kindergarten, they got this sheet that said, A, apple, A, B, you know.
They still do that.
Yes, yes. I still have that. They still have it on their refrigerator.
And you also, the parents get the skill that's being taught daily as well.
Oh, they do? So you do get like that update? Okay, because we used to do that too. But are there books, so he talked about decoding, is that something that parents get, like these decoding books?
The decodables come home in their book baggies.
And are they-
And it follows the rule that they're being taught.
Okay, so it's not like a letter anymore, it's more like an action, a practice? Okay. Oh, excellent.
Sorry to jump in. Are we going to move away from leveled reading? Because I feel like leveled reading is not great for kids, because you can come in one day and read a G, and then you're at an A, and I feel like it's not the best confidence booster, and there's really not a lot of science behind leveled reading. So are we looking to change that approach? Because in my professional opinion, I don't know that's the best for children, being leveled, and is there anything we're going to do about leveled reading?
So where leveled reading comes into play, it's not supposed to be a level, it's supposed to be a band, right? So when we are gaining, and the science of reading does support this, when you're learning about a topic, you're able to access more and more complex texts the more you know about a topic. So would we get rid of all our guided reading books? Absolutely not, because they have value, but we maybe use them in a different way. And I just wanted to add earlier, when we talk about the literacy briefs in our work that we're going to be moving forward, the state is very adamant about build your why first, be very cautious jumping into programs, build the team's knowledge, and that's really so critical, and it's why so many of us are doing the micro credentialing course through New Paltz and through other professional development.
There was that research study where they gave a high-level group a book about baseball, a lower-level group about baseball, but they knew more about baseball. So the level, the lower-level group actually did better than the higher-level readers.
Absolutely.
So the background knowledge is huge, and like I said-
And they have that vocabulary, so they're able to access it.
But I also think that when levels were created, they weren't created to be a, I'm going to label a child. And unfortunately, that's what it became. And that's what parents and kids, I'm reading, I'm a G. And instead of it being a way for us as educators to teach our kids. And so that is where the problem came with leveled books.
So are you still doing like guided reading, which you have your groups, and you know, you could have your higher-level kids together, but no one really knows who's doing what, you know? Do you guys do the guided reading as well?
They are meeting in small groups, strategy groups more so, based upon what students need, not necessarily by level.
Okay. Thank you.
I think that's great, because at the end of the day, the root of the problem, right, is phonological awareness and the phenomes, all the stuff that come before the comprehension. So if the students are meeting in those groups, and they're meeting on their skillset versus their level, they're going to get the, you know, the interventions that they need earlier on, and if you actually meet the child where they are versus their level. So I think that's a great suggestion. I think it's what's happening. So I have no further questions for what the board has. I just thank you again for everything, and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Ms. Dunkle, if you wouldn't mind.
I just wanted to take a minute to introduce our next presenter, Mr. Ron Caratou. So Ron, for those of you who don't know Ron or haven't met Ron, Ron took over as Director of Facilities October 1st in the school district, replacing Mr. McDonald, who retired after 10 years. And I speak for the entire administrative team to thank Ron. He's really come in and embraced Elwood as his own. He lives very close, and he has done so much work in the six months that he's been here that I just wanted to take a time to thank you. And Roger, our maintenance mechanic for, have been doing extraordinary work with the rest of the Buildings and Ground and Custodial team these past six months. So he's going to take you through a short presentation of some of the work that has been done. Ron?
Thank you very much for your kind words. I'm Ron Caratou, Director of Facilities in Elwood School District. I'm really excited about a lot of what we've gotten to accomplish in the Facilities Department over the last six months, and I'd like to update you on some of that now with this particular presentation. So the boring stuff first, the behind-the-scenes stuff, a lot of preventative maintenance, pneumatics, BMS, the stuff you really don't get to see, but it's so important. Pneumatics, we have our heat and our unit vents are controlled pneumatically. As they age, they tend to leak a little bit of air. That causes a lot of stress on the equipment. We have erratic temperatures, it's not as comfortable as the building should be. So what we did with the maintenance team is we set out to find these small leaks and correct them. So we went unit vent by unit vent, room by room, building by building, until we covered the entire district, found them, fixed them, corrected them, and the results were really dramatic. We had nice even heat, the building was comfortable, it was a great, very conducive atmosphere for learning, when you don't have to worry about one room being hot, one room being cold. The energy savings, too, were dramatic. We had equipment that wasn't running all the time now, which is obviously great for preserving the lifespan of that equipment. And again, the bottom line, we saved money, we saved energy, we helped the environment with that. So that was something that I was really proud of. BMS, our exhaust fans, our air conditioning, our tempered air units, our unit vents are all controlled on a BMS system on the computer. In the past, a lot of that was kind of set and forget, have it come on at 8:00, go off at 5:00. We went through building by building, zone by zone, and set it for occupied, unoccupied. If there was an after-school activity, there's no need to heat the entire building. You can separate those zones, so you can save energy again. Also, you know, less wear and tear on the equipment. We went through and we set it up for holidays, we set it up for after-school activities, we set it up for different zones and different needs. Again, we saw a radical change in how the building felt overall, a lot of energy savings, great for us, great for the environment. So we made a lot of district-wide improvements, too, which I'm very, very proud of. We did some power washing and sign restoration, we did some additional lighting, we did terrazzo floor restoration, we did some ceiling repairs and replacement, we did bottle filling stations, we did hand soap and sanitizer dispensers. So I'm going to go through some of these. We have some pictures. This was the front of EMS over by the cafeteria area. You can see it looks a little bit weathered, so we came in there and we power washed it. Dramatic results. You can see this from Kenneth Avenue, from the road when you drive by, it was just such a huge upgrade. Something that, you know, you may pass a million times a day and not think about it until you see it like that. Front of John Glenn, beautiful building, beautiful architecture, kind of marred by what we see here. That's what we have now. Dramatic. Most times, parents come up, and this is maybe as far as they get into the building, this is what they see, this is how they judge the district. So now it just looks beautiful. In tandem with that, we redid the lighting in the front there. So dramatic. We changed light fixtures in the front, we got all the same color bulbs, same wattage, and the effects were really dramatic. This is the side of EMS. We took all those fixtures down, cleaned them out, repaired all the fixtures, rewired a lot of them, and now we have this beautiful lit corridor here. We're going building by building, doing, making all of these changes. This is not only aesthetically pleasing, but it's also a security. The more lighting you have, obviously, the safer you feel in those particular areas, which is very important. Here we have the John Glenn Gymnasium. That's an active, very active entrance and exit for after-school sports. So we really lit it up there. It looks great, and again, it's a much safer environment. In the slide to the right is the rear of the gym, we lit that all up as well. Again, this is also a work in progress. We're going around building by building, identifying all the areas that we feel need to be lit up more, and we're taking care of that. And again, the results are really dramatic. This one's my favorite. We are so lucky to have terrazzo flooring in all of our buildings. Terrazzo is a type of stone. It's extremely durable, it will last forever if you take care of it. So what we did was I went in, and I have experience with this particular type of flooring, so we trained the custodial staff and maintenance on how to polish it. We put a team together, and we started to polish over at John Glenn, we set up another team over here at EMS, and as you can see in those slides, the floor looks like glass. It's beautiful. So we're going to go through all the buildings, and this is how all our hallways are going to look, which I'm really proud of. The front of Elwood Middle School, if you look to the left, Elwood Middle School was a silver, had silver-colored lettering on like a tan background. Couldn't really see it from the road, didn't really pop, so we turned around and we painted Elwood Middle School the school colors, and the difference was so dramatic. The day after we did that, I actually went out to take a look at it and kind of admire it, and some of the students were getting off of the school bus, and they were all pointing at it and talking about it, which was a great feeling. I was so happy that they noticed it, and the impact was huge for something so simple. We applied that over at Harley as well. We took the silver lettering up there, and we painted the school colors. This is before the second coat, so it's much more pronounced. We're going to do some lighting with that as well. Dramatic effect, showing off the name of our school so all can see, which is something I love. So at Boyd, we had some ceilings that were in need of some repair. So what we did was we took the main hallway first. We were so lucky to have, in our maintenance department, employees that had the skill to do this. We took the ceiling down, we replaced the two-by-four tiles, which were sagging, with two-by-two. On the right, that's the main hallway, the results were dramatic. We liked it so much, we went and took the ceiling down in that lobby right outside the principal's office and replaced that one. And the enthusiasm was so high, we went down to the Boyd Care entrance down by 309 and took the ceiling down there and replaced that, and replaced the lighting as well. So that's the slide on the left. Thrilled about that, it came out terrific. Water bottle filling stations, we've actually done, we've replaced two in this building, one in the athletic hallway over at John Glenn. The slide on the left is Boyd's cafeteria, the slide on the right is Harley upstairs. Again, this is a great way of curbing plastic bottle use, it's great for the environment, filtered water, terrific for all those who partake of that. And finally, soap and sanitizer dispensers. I know this seems insignificant, but when I got here, I went to our distributor of soap and sanitizer, asked for new dispensers, asked them to put a logo on it. He did, he gave them to us, it was at no charge to the district. We got them about a month ago and sent them to the custodians, they installed them everywhere. Huge impact, students love it, teachers love it. I like washing my hands much more now when I see that. Hopefully, that's contagious. And that is, that pretty much wraps up my presentation. But I'd be remiss if I didn't say that all of those things were done in-house with our employees. We have a great deal of talent here, our custodial, maintenance, ground staff, my maintenance team leader, Roger, my administrative assistant, they care about this district very, very much. There was no challenge in getting these things done, when I had people that were eager to get it done, they wanted to see the results, they wanted to be a part of this, they volunteer their suggestions on what they want to do next, which is just amazing to have that wave of enthusiasm and have such excited employees that care about the district that they work for. Thank you.
Thank you. Really appreciate it.
I just wanted to follow up with that, as Ron mentioned. We do have an amazing crew. We have certified plumbers, electricians, and Ron utilizes all of his crew as best he can. And he, by doing all of this work, everybody was saying, well, you know, how are we doing all this work? How much is it costing us? Everything that we're really doing, because it's in-house, it might cost a little bit of overtime, but everything else, even with the terrazzo floors, we already have all the equipment and supplies we need to get this stuff done. So he's really taken initiative to see what we already have and what work can be accomplished with that, and he's saving us thousands of dollars in doing so. So thank you, Ron. And thank you, Roger. Does anybody have any questions about the presentation, or?
I just want to say, thank you so much. You know, Ron, when you got the job, you came in with energy and enthusiasm. I'm a big attention to details guy, and you know, these are things that we've been looking for, since, you know, for years. You know, thank you so much for increasing our safety with the lighting, helping our environment with the water, saving money, and your attention to detail. Like I said, it makes me proud to drive through a campus that, you know, I look at all these small things, and I know a lot of our board members look for that. So please, thank your team. You know, I know you have a great team. Please send them my best, and you know, like I said, I'm very thankful that you're here, and I really like how our facilities, you know, are holding up over time. I really do appreciate that. Just, yeah, thank you so much. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions or comments?
You want to say something for Facilities?
I am, yeah.
Okay.
All right. So Ms. Weiss and I both chair the Facilities Committee, and Ron, you introduced yourself at your Team Justice. We got to see a little bit more in the Facilities Committee. They took a, yeah, they took the cafeteria shelf, that where you put your trays on, you slide across, they repurposed that. And they took it to one of our trucks, for one of our plow trucks, am I correct? And they repurposed it, they welded it onto the truck, they refabricated it. Not only are they creative and innovative, they use resources and their talents, as I said. So, correct. Things are moving in a great direction. We're seeing progress in areas that have been lacking. So your attention to detail, your team's ability and your ability to tap into their, you know, their talents is really a testament to your leadership and to your team. They rely on each other very heavily. We've seen that over the years, that our Buildings and Grounds team, it's like an orchestra out there. As they're working, they're harmonious with one another. Our custodians, you know, we're a small school, and we run a tight ship with not a big crew, but the jobs that get done are insurmountable. It's incredible, the amount of work that we get done in a small day here, with a small building, a small staff. So on behalf of the board, the Facilities Committee, thank you. Appreciate it. Dr. Siddiqui?
Yeah, I just wanted to also add a comment. Thank you so much for your presentation, but in the first slide that you had was not, absolutely not boring. That was the most, that was like the crux of it. So I loved, yeah, that you basically went in and diagnosed, like you reviewed, and then you diagnosed it, and then you went and treated it. So I wanted to give a big shout-out for that. And it's the preventative management, yes, I'm a big preventative maintenance is key, and I want you to maybe think about going into homes, because like, how do you get one room heated and then another room is like, you know, different? Because really, I would love to have that in my house. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Ms. Dunkle, you might as well stay where we are. Ms. Dunkle, you might as well stay where we are.
Most exciting presentation there is yet. Good evening once again to the board, my colleagues, the community members. Tonight's presentation is to, once again, give an overview of the budget, and this is, the, the presentation includes the final proposed number for budget adoption, which is placed on the agenda for this evening. So just to review once more, the budget has been built at a 2.02%, which is the tax levy limit. So we're right at the tax limit this year. The budget was developed successfully within the financial parameters set by the Board of Education, and we are sustaining and maintaining all of our current programs and offerings to students without any reductions. The proposed, the proposed budget dollar amount is $76,766,900, which represents a budget-to-budget increase of roughly 5%. This is an overview of the different categories we have for revenue, and you'll see each line item. We have our tax levy, which is what the voter, you know, the community is paying in taxes. State aid, we still have an asterisk there because, as many of you may or may not know, the state budget, which was due April 1st, is now in its third extension, and they're hoping that the budget will be approved by April 15th. So if we have to adopt a new budget, legally, we are permitted to, but we're hoping that is not the case. So there is a chance that our state aid numbers could fluctuate. The next line represents a pilot, which is payment in lieu of taxes from specific companies that exist within the Elwood boundaries. Our reserves and fund balance is the money that the district is allocating out of its, those two category. We have various reserves that we use. The 1.3 million represents money coming from both our ERS and TRS reserves to help offset the expenses. And fund balance, we're increasing from 2 million to 3 million again to help fill that gap that we see in our revenue. And the other category just simply represents miscellaneous income that we charge, we charge outside vendors for use of facilities. That's interest income on our bank accounts. So there's a few small items. Donations could be included in there. That's just, you know, that's a very small portion of our revenue. And you'll see in the next slide, these are the different, it's just a pie chart to represent the different categories. And as you can see, our tax levy is the largest portion of our revenue. It's roughly 70 to 72%. On the other side of the budget, by law, which has to be balanced, you'll see our various categories. We have general support, which represents most of the district office and administrative expenses. Our legal services, our insurance costs, meaning insurance for the school district, not benefits for employees, fall within that general support category, as does our custodial and maintenance departments. Instructional deals directly with classroom instruction. So you have all of your teacher expenditures, classroom expenditures, materials and supplies, contractual, equipment, anything really direct, directly involved with direct instruction. Transportation is self-explanatory. Benefits represents health insurance, dental insurance, any type of medical insurance that is given to employees, as well as our costs for the teachers' retirement system and the employees' retirement system. Social Security is also in there as well, the, the cost that the district pays on behalf of the employees. Debt service, that represents our debt that we still owe on the remaining balance of the bonds that we have over the years, as well as our EPC, which is our Energy Performance Contract. And interfund transfers is money that represents money that we have to expense or transfer to other funds. So that represents some money that is going to capital, that we've spoken about it previous, I'll speak about that after this slide. But we're transferring some money to capital to cover some capital expenses that are not covered by the bond, to get some smaller projects done. We also have money that is transferred to our federal fund. Our grants do not cover all of our federal expenses. And lastly, the third piece of the interfund transfers is for the school lunch fund. So whenever there is a, either a deficit in the school lunch fund, which here does not happen in the past few years, we have to transfer to school lunch, but at the end of the school year, excuse me one second, at the end of the school year, any student, any negative balances left over by students has to be zeroed out, and that money, by law, has to come from the general fund. So that's that line item. As you can see, the 76 million balances with the revenue side, so we are proposing a balanced budget. It would be very scary if we weren't. And this slide just represents, again, just the expenditure portion of the budget, and largest piece, as you would expect, is the instructional piece. These next three slides represent the line-by-line detail for each of our expenditure codes. We have this year's proposed budget versus, this year's, let me start over. We have the proposed budget for next year compared to the current year, '23, '24, and the difference between each. As you can see, there's many of them, but, so again, you see the total at the bottom. We have the 76 million versus last year's 73 million with the difference of roughly So we like to remind the community and the board that when the community is voting on the budget, they're voting on essentially a total dollar amount. They're not, they're not technically voting on each expenditure line because there are things that could change that. So some of the factors that can affect that is enrollment, technology, special education, transportation. So depending on those various needs, the budget lines may shift from one to another, but it will not affect the overall budget total. So contingent budget. When a school district puts up a budget for vote, and that budget does not pass, the school district or the Board of Education has three different choices. They can propose the same budget up once again for the community to vote on. They can propose a revised budget, or they can go directly to a contingent budget. If we were to go to a contingent budget, we would have to make reductions of just over $1 million in order to move forward for next year. And in doing so with a contingent budget, there are certain line items that have to be taken into consideration first by law. And that is mostly equipment, so it's, it's non-contingent items. So anything that's not 100% necessary for classroom instruction. So if we have like, all of the equipment in the maintenance, any budget lines we have for equipment in, sorry, in our buildings and grounds, that would be eliminated first. Any other equipment district-wide would be eliminated. Any non-essential employees, and I hate saying that because all of our employees are essential. But there are, there are specific categories that we have to look at first when we make reductions. We can't just pick and choose what we want to. We have to follow guidelines by New York State. I also wanted to speak to the capital reserve reminder. This year, there is a second proposition on the ballot when the budget, when the voters come to vote. Proposition two, similar to last year, is to spend $500,000 out of our capital reserve. And I want to just remind everyone that that money is not part of the tax levy. It will not affect your taxes whether or not it passes or fails, because that money is already in our capital reserve. So it's important that the community understands that. And as far as spending from the capital reserve, we're looking to make security enhancements as well as additional equipment purchases. So we're looking to do upgrades to our John, John James H. Boyd entryways and doorways. We're looking to purchase some district-wide maintenance vehicles and grounds equipment, as well as enhancing security through district, other district-wide door and window hardware replacement. So it's been a big, security continues to be a big topic of discussion district-wide for students and staff. So these, these are some of the things that we want to accomplish with that money if the proposition is approved by voters. And this slide is my least favorite slide. I just wanted to have a conversation. We've been talking all year about spending into our reserves and our fund balance, and it just, I just want to remind the board and the community, this year, we were able to sustain all of our programs and maintain programs and staff, including all the programs that were being paid for by the federal grants. So those federal grants have now disappeared, and the general fund budget has absorbed all of those programs. We worked very hard as a team to make that happen, being creative in many areas. But it's, by doing so, we are utilizing additional funds from our reserves and from our fund balance. That is not something that we can, can sustain long-term. So I just wanted to bring that up as a reminder. And as everyone, I'm sure, on Long Island will know, from the news that is out there, you know, again, everybody knows there's a problem with state aid. There are many school districts on Long Island that are making drastic cuts to both program and staff. And I'm grateful that we do not have to do that. We hope to sustain that. But again, I just, I believe next year may be a little bit difficult. I didn't want to be bad, bad news, but I just wanted to make sure that the board and the community were aware. But we always hope for additional state aid and other funding revenues, but without them, it will be difficult to continue on the path that we're on. And just a reminder, the budget vote is Tuesday, May 21st. Not only the budget vote, but the board election as well. So please, community members, everyone, please come out and vote. Anybody have any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Dunkle. Questions? Dr. Deke?
Thank you, Ms. Dunkle. That was a very informative presentation, and thank you so much for your hard work in continuing to maintain all our programs and at the, you know, request of the board to stay within the tax cap. It's very much appreciated. I just wanted you to just remind us again regarding the borrowing that we're doing from our reserves. You know, if, if you could just go over that one more time. And then also, I just wanted you to explain what would happen, God forbid, if we have to go to like another budget or the contingency budget? If, like you said, there were three options if we have to go to that? And what would happen if it doesn't pass the second time?
So if, if the board, if the board proposes either the same budget or a revised budget, and it does not pass, we're required to go to contingency. So we would have to, at that point, cut the $1 million out of our, you know, out of the school district budget. So we'd be looking at probably staff reductions and possibly some program, depending on, you know, how creative we can get. It could affect class sizes, you know, there's, there's various things that can happen. But in addition to equipment, I know I was speaking about non-essential items before, but when we look at non-contingent items, we're also talking about transportation. One of the other first things that we typically look at, just as school business officials, is athletics or co-curricular clubs. So it can really directly affect the students, which, you know, we don't like to do that.
Right. Right. And then just for, when you...
Oh, you asked me about the, the funds also, correct?
Oh, yes, yes.
So we keep a, by New York State law, we are eligible to keep 4% fund balance, which is 4% of our total budget, in a, I'll call it like a, an emergency fund that's not designated for something specific. So out of those funds, where, when the budget was first created, we had a gap of roughly, I'm going to say $2 million. So in order to fill that gap with revenue, because we're at the tax cap, we couldn't increase that, we couldn't, we couldn't increase the tax levy anymore without piercing the cap, and that was not an option this year. So in order to fill that gap, we have to go and borrow more money from our own reserves to fill that gap. But the more we do that, the less we have the following year. So that's why I was speaking in my final slide, just about, you know, projecting out for multiple years. It's difficult to continue in that practice because we, the more we spend, the less we
And then I just had one more, just question regarding the capital reserve ballot or the, the vote. Is that on the other side of the ballot? Do we have to turn over our ballot, or is that going to be on the same side of, is that, or is that not like set yet?
Mrs. Marks?
Off the top of my head, I think it's on the same side.
On the same side? Okay, great.
I believe it's side by side, but I'm not 1,000% sure.
Okay. And then if we agree on approving the transfer, which is not any additional tax, it's just that we're agreeing to spend that money on what you're stating, we vote yes?
Correct.
Okay.
Right, if, right, if the community, the community approved the creation of the capital reserve, I believe in 2018. So when we've had the opportunity to, we've put money into that reserve. So it's essentially, it's a savings account for capital projects, but in order to spend that money, we need voter approval. The community was very supportive last year, so we're looking to do that again to allow us to complete some other projects that deal, you know, again, with our buildings and grounds department, but more importantly, with our safety.
Ms. Dunkle, thank you so much. I know recently in the news, Governor Kathy Hochul said she increased aid to schools. Have we seen an increase in aid since she made that announcement?
So the, she's, she's proposing an increase, but not, there's no specific line items per school district. What I have heard from my resources, I, I'll remind you, I serve on the Suffolk Association of School Business Officials, and we have representatives who work directly in Albany and are witness to all of the proceedings that are happening. They strongly feel that she is going to reinstate, hold harmless for foundation aid, which translates to no districts receiving any less foundation aid next year than they have this year.
So what would that look like for Elwood?
Based on the information I've been given, I would say about $120,000. So I've taken that and already incorporated that into the budget. And that's just, that's just one piece. That's just the foundation aid part of the budget. There are other aid categories that have not been addressed yet.
So that number could be a little higher, a little lower, but your gut's saying probably around that number? I know we can't, you know, have a...
Yes, I'm being, I'm being a little more aggressive this year than I have in previous years.
We have to. And then with regard to the Boyd for the Capital Bond Project, is that going to create like a double-door system for extra layer of security, or is that just going to clean up? I know some of the flooring was getting a little warped. What exactly is that going to look like?
So the, the main entrance of Boyd, we're looking to completely renovate, again, because of the, like the settling of the building and the doorways, we've had issues with in the past. We're lucky that Boyd already has that double-door system because they're the only building that really has that little atrium, if you'd like to call that, or, you know, what you call it. So we're looking to enhance that. The actual plans on what to do with it have not been finalized. It's something we have to speak to the facilities committee at, and just as a group decide. But either way, the doors need to be replaced, as well as doors inside the building need to be replaced as well.
Is there, when they come through the first set of doors, is there, like, do they have to be buzzed into the second set of doors currently? Is that something that we might be able to, if we're going to redo all of this?
Yes, it's something we're looking into.
Include to add an extra layer of security? Okay. Thank you so much.
Yes, because we have the ability to upgrade that entire entranceway. We're looking to enhance it as best we can, especially for security purposes.
Thank you so much.
Well, thank you. I guess in all the years we've been doing budget, I have to say that this year, you know, I'm, I'm very confident in this budget. I think that considering that we lost, because, you know, all the grant money has gone away, and to be able to absorb that into the budget, not cut programs, to be able to maintain class size and keep ourselves at a relatively, stay within the cap, keep ourselves at a relatively low percentage of 2.02%, I'm, I'm pretty satisfied. So, I mean, looking at what the world is going through, looking at the cost of living that's going up all around us, looking what other districts are going through, they're accessing employees, they're, you know, some districts are 10%. So I consider us very lucky and to be able to maintain our programs. So I, kudos to everybody that really worked really hard to put that together. So thank you. So I hope, you know, this, the budget just requires a simple majority, correct? Okay? The capital improvement, we already have that money. So it's just a matter of people saying, these are legitimate projects that we need to get done so that your taxes are not raised. It's just coming out of that savings account. So if you look at it and say, yes, I agree, this is a good project that we really need, you know, Elwood needs to get done. you know, Elwood needs to get done, please vote yes for them. And, and what's the date again? May what?
21st.
21st?
Yeah, Tuesday, the 21st.
Tuesday, Tuesday, the 21st. Be there or be square, right? Everybody come out and vote, please.
And I just, thank you, Ms. Weiss. I just wanted to add on that. I think, I think many districts, when they received the funds from COVID, because of the, you know, mental health issues with children returning to instruction, returning to school, many of them had no choice but to use those funds to hire additional staff, to assist with programs and classroom and the mental health. And, you know, my colleagues, everyone has been as creative as they can. So I would say, you know, I thank the board and the administration here with the creativity that we use to not use our funds for, mostly for non-reoccurring expenses. I think we had a very small portion, which is the money that's being absorbed by the budget. But I think being proactive in that sense, when we looked at how to spend the funds, you know, going back to Dr. Hull, Ms. Valley, just, you know, everyone really, our administrative team got together, even the principals, just to really look at what, how to best use those funds, knowing that eventually they were going to, going to disappear. So I appreciate their support, and I appreciate, I appreciate the support from the Board of Education. So I think it put us in a better place now than not.
And I think the bottom line is that we do what's in the best interest of the children. And we had two great presentations tonight. One from Ron, utilizing resources and being very resourceful for what we have. And another one, looking at how to really look at a new program for reading and how to really enhance our children's ability to critically think and their reading levels. And it's just, it's amazing at the strides that we're making. So thank you to everybody.
Thank you. Yes, kind of stole my thunder, Ms. Weiss. I was going to say the same thing. If there was a theme tonight or a theme throughout our district, it's, we're small but mighty. We do a lot with a little. And we saw that through the science of reading tonight. We saw what our teachers and our administrators are accomplishing with all the changes coming down. We saw what our facilities departments do, and we see what our business departments do. We're doing a lot with a little. And, you know, we do talk about depleting some of our reserves, and we're creative. We're tapping into our ERS and our TRS and our fund balance, and we're utilizing different areas to not deplete everything in one shot. And, you know, that takes a lot of due diligence in trying to understand the ever-changing percentages, you know? Is TRS increasing but then decreasing? You're trying to really strike a balance, which is challenging. So thank you for being methodical in your approach, because that's not easy to do. But I think what sometimes we do forget, as a board, as a community, as a society, we are seeing increases in health insurance. We saw exorbitant increases in our transportation in the last five years. What we really haven't seen is exorbitant increases in our budget. And although we are tapping into our reserves, we're doing so at a rate to make sure that we're making palatable budgets for our community, all while sustaining the program, the co-curriculars, and all the enhancements. Think about the enhancements. COVID came down, we didn't utilize all of the, you know, funds for reoccurring programs or staff. We did a lot of one timers, which was wonderful. But where we did have these reoccurring expenses, we're absorbing it and keeping our budget at 2.02. That's, that is challenging. And that's what this district is accomplishing right now. Enhancements with less. So really, I think that there's a mantra or a theme to leave here tonight and to be proud of in this community is we do more with less. So thank you, thank you to Ron and to our staff, to everybody tonight. You really are proven that we are small but mighty. So thank you.
All right, well, thank you, Ms. Dunkel. Marathon of presentations, and now we gotta keep going. There's still a meeting to run. All right. So we are up to our board recognition of donations this evening. We have a bunch. Ms. Weiss, if you could, please.
Okay. So be resolved that upon the recommendation of the interim superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby accepts the following donations with gratitude. Four books from the Elwood Middle School PTA to the Elwood Middle School Library with an estimated value of $59.72. Spider-Man Fake Red by, I'm going to say this wrong, Yusuke Osuasa? Okay, thank you. One of Us is Lying by Karen M- Magnus, thank you. Heroes by Alan Graz to $1,000 from the Suffolk County Chapter of the New York State School Facilities Association to be used to fund a scholarship to be awarded to a deserving graduated senior, graduating senior. Very nice. $721.64 from the Elwood Booster Club to support the purchase of Solar Eclipse Glasses for Students and Staff at Harley Avenue Primary School and James H. Boyd Intermediate School. Thank you very much to the Booster Club. That was a last minute request and donation, and we truly appreciate that. $3,240 from the Elwood Booster Club to support the following after-school clubs for the 2024 spring season. The Boardmaker Space Club, five weeks, one session equals $400. The Boyd Dance Club, five weeks, one session equals $400. The Harley Maker Space Club, six weeks equals one session, $480 for advisor and $120 for teaching assistant. The Harley Dance Club, six weeks, one session equals $480. The Harley Avenue Art Club, six weeks, two sessions, $960. The Harley Avenue AM Gym Games, five weeks, one session, $400. And then the next donation is 85-inch HD Samsung TV and mounting bracket from the Elwood Booster Club for the cafeteria at the James H. Boyd Intermediate School valued at $1,286.16. So thank you to all these, for these wonderful donations. They make a difference in our children's education, and we truly appreciate them. One final note, I'm going to do a plug because I am covering this year for the PTSA scholarships. And April 15th is not only tax day, but is also the day that the scholarships are due. And these are important scholarships because they are community-based scholarships. So these are for the children that are in our district that have helped out at dances, helped out at community events. And we encourage any senior child out there who has done some work for the PTA to submit a scholarship. They are due, they're not that difficult to do. There are posters in every building with QR codes. You can go onto the guidance websites. And we, we really encourage them. They're, they're about $500 each, correct, Agapi? $500 each? We give several of them in each of the buildings. And it's really, I mean, obviously, it doesn't cover tuition, but tuition is very expensive, and it, every little bit helps, every little bit. So if you're a parent, get your kids out there to write an essay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weiss. May I have a motion for the following donations? Motion, Dr. Siddiqui, seconded by Ms. Scorola, all in favor, 4-0. That brings us up to our consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve our consent agenda in its entirety? Motion by Mrs. Weiss, seconded by Mrs. Scorola. Questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor, 4-0 for the consent agenda. That brings us up to our action items this evening. We have two. May I have a motion for the following? Be resolved that upon the recommendation of the interim superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby adopts the expenditure appropriation of $76,760,609, known as the budget, to operate the schools for the 2024-2025 fiscal year and present such budget appropriation to district residents for a vote on May 21st, 2024. Motion, Mrs. Weiss, seconded by Dr. Siddiqui, all in favor, 4-0. And number two is to approve the property tax report card. May I have a following, a motion for the following? Be resolved that upon the recommendation of the interim, interim superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the 2024-2025 property tax report card as presented to the board at this meeting. And be it further resolved that the Assistant Superintendent for Business is directed to submit the property tax report card to the State Education Department by the end of the next business day following this approval. And be it further resolved that the Assistant Superintendent for Business is authorized to amend and subsequently resubmit the property tax report card to the State Education Department at a later date if our state aid changes as a result of the final adoption of the New York State budget. Motion. Dr. Siddiqui, seconded by Mrs. Weiss, all in favor, 4-0. All right. Ms. Marks? I have one more for the set cards. That needs to be standalone as well? That was on consent, right? It was just the two? Okay. So that takes care of those. Thank you. That's on there. Part of the consent.
Okay.
All righty. Well, that brings us up to our next residence remarks.
Come on up.
All righty. You know I have to read, right? Give me one second. All right. The Board encourages all residents to attend this meeting, and this section of the agenda affords them the opportunity to speak. Persons wishing to speak should identify themselves, say whether they are resident of the Elwood School District and any organization that represent this meeting. Comments related to district business or any agenda item should be kept as brief as possible and may not exceed three minutes. Board policy 1230. Questions or comments concerning matters which are not on the agenda will be taken under consideration and may be terminated or discontinued by the president. Public discussion of matters relating to staff, students, or others at which their reputations, privacy, or right to due process could in some way be violated is prohibited. Should just push the bottom.
Yep, yes, perfect.
Okay. My name is Marlene Castanza, resident, parent of two, one at John Glenn, one recent graduate. My question is on behalf of just myself and not any organization of which I am a part. Might be out of left field, to be completely honest, my question. The district sends out notifications to community members when a sex offender has moved into the boundaries of the district to let us know that they're there. I live on the, near the border of our district, very close stone throw from a neighboring district. I was wondering if there was a procedure in place, or perhaps could be put in place, that neighboring districts can let us know if someone moves into a neighborhood close to Elwood. If I walk 100 yards down my street, I'm in another district. So it greatly affects my family and my neighbors' families when someone moves very close by, even though they are not in Elwood technically. So again, I'm wondering if there's something in place where we can be notified by a neighboring district, or if it's something that can be discussed and maybe put in place at some point with a neighbor, with neighboring districts.
Thank you, Ms. Castanza. It's a proximity thing, because I know within our district, we get notified, but I don't believe in, Ms. Fallon, correct me if I'm wrong, if it's a neighboring district, we don't get notified. So I appreciate you bringing it to our attention, because that is a stone throw away, right? If it's Comac, it could be across the double yellow lines on Larkfield Road, it could be Comac, and they have one. So I guess is that something we'd have to reach out to, yeah, to Huntington, to see if we can be in a close door Suffolk. So, so thank you for bringing that to our attention. That's something we'll take under advisement and look into. So we appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Karine Suskin. I'm representing myself, nobody else. Do I have, oh, I have two kids in the district, a senior and a seventh grader. And she's graduating. I have a question for Ms. Dunkel. I know we have a very tight budget, very, very tight. Is there any possibility that we could look into busing one bus for after-school activities for the students?
I'm going to ask you to be a little more specific. Are you asking for high school? Because there used to be a run, you're talking about-
Anything.
Just an after-school that maybe goes through all four buildings?
Right.
Okay, just because it's, the cost could be different. So I just want to make sure.
Yeah, just busing so that children who don't have a parent who can pick them up after school can have the opportunity to do the extracurricular activities that the other students are lucky to have.
Thank you for the clarity. I used to take the late bus in high school, so I get it. So I don't know, I mean, it's a-
Thank you for the question. Interestingly, you are not the first person to ask that question in recent weeks. So it is something we are looking into, because cost is obviously a factor. And then it's, you know, to determine, you know, is, is one bus enough? You know, depending on the number of students that stay after school. And if we offer, if we offer late bus to our students, our in-house students in Elwood, we would also have to offer it to any students in private school. So that changes the scenario as well. So it is something that was brought, you know, asked by a resident recently. So it's something we're looking into. But I, you know, I can't promise you either way, if it can happen, and if it does, when that would happen. But it is something we're currently reviewing.
Okay. And, sorry, I have another question. But I don't know if you're the right people to ask about this. I did have a question regarding the reading stuff. My question was, is it possible, or actually, are the reading specialists who help out the, all the children, are they also being trained at the same time as the teachers are in all these new reading programs?
Yes, are you referring to the AIS teachers that are in the district? Yes, they are receiving the same training through the Reading League as well.
So they'll be working, they'll be coordinating with the teachers and working together using the same programs?
Absolutely. Every training that the teachers are receiving, the AIS teachers are receiving as well.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Agapi Bell, parent, resident, and I'm speaking on my behalf, on my personal behalf and not any organization that I'm a part of. So I think this budget is great, and I'm really grateful that we're, everyone, you know, we're able to maintain the programs and, you know, I'm always trying to figure out, like, you know, sometimes I look at the attachments to the agendas and the budget transfer line items, and I try to make heads or tails of it just for myself. And sometimes, so I, what I'm wondering is, what I was waiting to hear, usually when the budget's presented, you also say, like, this won't affect our Moonies rating and all that. So I was waiting to hear someone, you know, that wasn't brought up tonight. So I just want to, you know, $1.8 million is a lot that we're taking out of the reserve. I think that's right, the reserve. So, and that's more than we took out last year, which is more than other year, you know? So my concern from just coming to these meetings for years is that's always something that you guys talk about. So I just wanted to make sure that this 1.8, I mean, I have no problem using my savings or our savings, just to make sure the kids get everything that they can get, you know? So as long as our long-term fiscal health isn't detrimentally affected.
Yeah, to speak a little bit to, I think that's why I was complimenting Ms. Dunkel, because she's been doing such a wonderful job at methodically using certain reserves. So where she's seeing increases maybe, or less contributions needed to the TRS, which is Teacher Retirement System, she's pulling a little out of the reserves there. She's pulling a little out of the ERS, the Employee Retirement System. So she's taking a little bit across different, what would you call it? You usually use a word for it. Buckets, right? They're buckets, I guess. I don't know if that's, I'm trying to think of what you use. But, so in the sense that we're not taking directly just from our fund bound, the fund balance. So, and as far as Moonies, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Dunkel, we won't know until they actually rate us. And I don't know if using reserves will ding us as per all of our other areas that are selling.
So just to expand on what Mr. Tomio said, yes, we try to use the reserves that we can for specific expenditures like the retirement systems. Another one we use is our EBOLAR, which has to do with accrued and liability, employee benefits and accrued liability. So it has to deal with staff members when they're retiring and, you know, how their benefits look into retirement. But besides that, the, the practice of utilizing additional fund balance and additional reserves long-term can affect our Moonies rating. We didn't, I didn't speak to it too much tonight. I know I spoke about it in earlier presentations. Fortunately, because our bond is now coming to a close, we don't need to borrow for the bond in the next year or two until we- for the bond in the next year or two until we put forward another bond to the community. So, by that time, we're hoping to be heading in, back into the other direction. Um, but again, last year, our Moody's rating was upgraded. Um, so, but Moody's won't have to take a look at Elwood for this upcoming school year. Um, you know, I can't say either way if it would be downgraded at that point, but just in general, the practice of utilizing additional funds, uh, fund balance and reserves, um, could negatively affect it. So, I appreciate the question.
Yeah. Thank you. This is kind of what I, I wanted to be on the webcast, like this little detail. So, I do applaud, uh, the entire business department for doing everything so methodically, but I appreciate the explanation. I needed to hear it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. Any other residents?
Uh, I am Leonard Suskin, um, parent of two students in the district, a seventh grader and twelfth grader, all of them in the other order. Um, I represent only myself and not the more beautiful Suskin and probably smarter one who was up here before me. Um, anyway, um, couple of things. One, thank you so much for all the presentations. I'm getting some deja vu from the budget presentation. I feel we had the same conversation last year about, you know, the expenditures are going up faster than the tax cap goes up. We need more money. We're gonna borrow from reserves. We're essentially kicking the can down the road. I might've asked then, I'm asking again now, is there a longer-term plan for what happens when we run out of road? And how much road is left? Is there anything that, um, the board and the administration is targeting for those tough conversations next year, the year after next, when maybe there's not another extra million and a half dollars?
Yeah, you could take this one. The, the, the long and short is, yes, there, you know, there's multi-year plan that takes place, and, um, Ms. Dunkel takes a good, hard look at, you know? We don't know what tomorrow's gonna bring, next year's budget's gonna look like, but, um, I will compliment Ms. Dunkel and her team. They take a really hard look, and not just today. There's a lot of long-term planning. It's a five-year outlook projection that Ms. Dunkel, um, you know, takes a really close look at. So, there's definitely stilts and procedures and, um, controls in place to make sure that we are keeping up. But there, there, you know, like I mentioned, health insurance, transportation, those are costs that have increased recently. You just, you can't budget. I mean, you budget for it, and you, you absorb it, but you have to get creative by utilizing reserves, unfortunately. But that's also why you have, you know, you, you have your savings account. So, I'll let Ms. Dunkel go into the, the why and how much road we have left, I guess, because I can't tell you that. But I know she's doing a great job at making sure that when the rubber meets the road, we're ready for it.
Thank you. Um, it, it's a great question, and, and we do. There is a lot of deja vu each budget, um, cycle. Because again, it's, it's not something that comes highly recommended as far as dipping further into reserves and fund balance, but sometimes we don't have a choice. Um, in the current state of the economy, it would be very, one of the easy, well, that's not an easy, one of the tasks that the board and administration, um, or could put forward with the budget is a budget that pierces the tax cap. And we try to be very responsible and have a balanced budget to balance that against our taxpayers. Um, so it's not, it wouldn't be responsible at this time to ask the residents to pierce the tax cap, because, you know, people are struggling, just as, you know, people are struggling with the rate of inflation and, you know, CPI is going up, but, you know, not, not everyone's seeing that as far as their earnings, and everyone's expenses are going up at home, similar to the school districts. And that's why, you know, we're starting to face more of a struggle. But as far as long-term outlook, um, we, I would say we don't have very much road left if we, if we continue on this path. And that's what I was speaking about in my final slide. Um, we do have to come up with better solutions. Now, there are always things we could look at internally. Um, years ago, not, not, maybe not in Elwood and in some of my former districts, um, when certain teachers retire, if you can, you don't replace that teacher. You can, sometimes you can, um, add by subtraction, like, you know, by attrition. We don't, we don't replace teachers. Um, some districts utilize retirement incentives to get out, you know, their top-paying staff in order to replace them with lower-paying staff. So, those are just some ideas, not, you know, and again, we haven't done that recently in Elwood, something, you know, we've, I've seen in other districts in my career. Um, but, you know, when it, when we're capped at this 2% tax cap formula, it's very difficult to build a balanced budget when you can't ask for more money. And because of Elwood's size and its enrollment and, um, other factors that come into the formula, our state aid is not very much money either. So, our state aid is roughly 20% of our entire budget. So, we're getting, let's say, 15, 16 million dollars, and we have a 76 million dollar budget. Most of that, the rest of that money has to come from the taxpayers. So, it's, it is a difficult balance. Um, we do have a five-year projection that, you know, we try to, um, stay within those parameters, you know, using our best estimates. Because if there's a year where CPI is less than 2%, then the tax cap formula goes down. Um, we talk about borrowing money. When the school district has a bond, and this doesn't always make sense to residents, but when we have a bond and we have debt on our books as far as expenditures, that helps, um, as far as our finances, because it's, we then can file for state aid on projects that we do, and that offsets the expenditure for the debt. So, most school districts are consistently functioning with debt on their books, because without it, we'd have less flexibility with our tax gap. So, I hope that helps answer the question. But, um, each year, and not, not just at budget time, and, and the budget cycle typically starts in October, but each year, we're continuously looking at different ideas. And again, we have no idea what's coming down the road. State aid may change their formulas immediately. Everybody's gonna get more money. Um, you know, this year, last year, the governor, um, implemented full foundation aid, which gave districts the money that they were missing for the 10 years earlier. Elwood was not, um, very short as far as foundation aid, so we didn't have a huge impact, but some school districts did. And then this year, she essentially cut off all of our legs by changing the foundation formula. I mean, there are school districts out there that are losing millions of dollars. And, you know, I don't know how they're able to balance their budget, and that's why you're seeing all of these reductions. I'm very thankful that Elwood is not in that situation. But, you know, we have no idea, depending on, you know, it could be the political party, the governor, you know, if the legislature decides to change them. There's so many factors that go into state aid that can affect how we do it. And we try to control what we know, and that's, that's the best approach I've found in my career as far as budgeting.
Okay. Well, thank, thank you for that. That does answer somewhat, at least. If I can indulge in one not unrelated follow-up. Last year, um, maybe around this time, uh, the board narrowly, after a lot of community debate, added, you know, what I think was an additional expense in armed security for the buildings. Um, I know that that doesn't come close to the million and change, you know, deficit or shortfall, but maybe it was a quarter of a million-ish. Has there been any thought towards revisiting that or, um, the possibility of pulling that back off the books as a place to save money?
That has not been a conversation of the board just yet, um, because we were able to balance the budget, and we didn't have to reduce anything. If we were in a budget that we had to look at reducing arts and sports versus something else, that would probably be a conversation that the board would have. But in this particular budget, there's nothing that we're looking to cut. There's nothing, you know, we're doing more with less. So, it, it was a conversation, because nothing needed to be cut at this point. So, I think.
Okay. Um, so noted, and thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Any other residents wishing to speak? All righty. May I have a motion to re-enter executive session, um, for the discussion of a personnel matter? Personnel matters. Dr. Siddiqui, seconded by Mrs. Weiss, all in favor, four zero. Thank you, everybody. Enjoy the upcoming spring break, and we will see you on May 9th.
Bros, thank you for being here.